I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll start out with our mission statement. Transforming education, inspiring love, empowering all.
We begin with the title of the United States of America. And through your body, for these stands, one nation, under God, in the world, will never cease. And thus, for all.
This is a regular meeting with expected assessment of the Board of School Trustees of the Lakewood New Tech School, Lake County, Indiana. February tenth, twenty twenty-five, at six oh four P M. in the Lakewood School's meeting room. Let the record show that the board members and the superintendent are present. Let the record show the administrators that are present. I'd like to consider the attached accounts payable vouchers and the January thirty-one, twenty twenty-five payroll or payment. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bacon. May I have a second? Second by Ms. Neath. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Three a's, zero n's. Motion carries. I'd like to consider the Treasury report as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Neath. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Bacon. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Three a's, zero n's. Motion carries. Then we're going to consider the Old National Athletic Complex Donation Fund Treasury report as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. May I have a motion?
A motion to consider the Athletic Donation Fund?
Motion by Mr. Bacon. May I have a second? Second by Ms. Neath. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Three a's, zero n's. Motion carries. Then we're going to consider the Old National Self-Insurance Fund Treasury report as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Neath. May I have a second?
A second to motion.
Second by Mr. Bacon. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Three a's, zero n's. Motion carries. Then we're going to consider the minutes of the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five school board meeting. May I have a motion?
Motion to consider the meeting.
Motion by Mr. Bacon. May I have a second? Second by Ms. Neath. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Three a's, zero n's. Motion carries. Then we're going to go ahead and move on. We have some presentations tonight, the curriculum, the Title One, and the communication presentation.
Good evening. How are you guys doing today? Um, we're going to bounce out the presentation material first. I know some of it may be a little bit hard to read on the screen. Um, but I will try to enlarge it if I can if there's things that book too tiny. So as we get that passed out, I just want to introduce myself. I'm Cynthia Mostrino, Assistant Superintendent. This is Regan Johnson, uh, our Title One Director. And he's also over Title Three, um, grants and Esther. And we have Eric Johnson, who is our Communications Coordinator. And so Regan and I are going to go first with the curriculum and Title One presentation. And we have them combined because everything that we do overlaps. So we're going to start with a why. Why are we here with Lakewood School? What is it that we're doing? Our why is our student. So our district vision is our students will be empowered to reach their dreams, strengthen their communities, and enrich the world. So when we think about everything we're doing with curriculum, instruction, and assessment, it all comes back to our students and their ability to to carry out their dreams and strengthen their community and enrich the world. So that's my caveat. So we want to start tonight by beginning with the end in mind. Indiana The Indiana legislators, the State Board of Education, and the Indiana Department of Education worked the past about three years to redesign the high school diplomas. So when we think about what our students have to do when they graduate, everything that leads up to that, starting in preschool through grade twelve, is everything that revolves around curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So we're first going to give you a brief overview of the new diplomas uh, that the state is requiring that begin with this year's eighth graders. So when they start high school next year, this is going to be their new diploma requirements. There's a lot of shifts in these new diploma requirements. Um, they were just approved in December of twenty twenty-four, so this past December, a couple of months ago. And we have to implement them by August. And so far, they haven't given us a whole lot of direction as to what some things mean. So I will do my best. If you have questions, please raise your hand and stop me. I'll do my best to explain to you what we know so far. So we know that the I D O E wanted to make the high school experience more rigorous. So they wanted to be sure that all students, by the time they graduate, are either enrolled in some type of post-secondary education, not just a four-year college. Maybe they're enrolled at Ivy Tech to become a plebodamist. Maybe they're enrolled to become a C and A. Maybe they're in an apprenticeship. And so they also want to be sure that if they're not enrolled, that they're employed. And they want them to have a meaningful employment that is making a living wage. So you got to think about jobs that more than likely will require some type of post-secondary, as we used to call it, credential um, or certification to do that job, to have a good wage, or they want them enlisted um, in the service. So by the time they graduate, it's got to be one of those three within one year of graduation. Sorry. So the I D O E wanted to have their design priorities known. Um, and so their design priorities in redesigning these diplomas were to make sure that there was flexibility for students to personalize their learning journey. And these are some key elements I that we're going to get to deeper into um, when we go over the diploma types. They wanted to increase simplicity for students, parents, and schools. We'll see if they accomplish that, but I think that you guys will find that it's not so simple. And they wanted to increase access to work-based learning and credentials of value. So back when I was in school and many of us were in school that are in this room, um, we used to have a pretty robust work-based learning program at Calumet. Um, we had Ms. Simic, who was a work-based learning teacher, and Mr. Portman. We had a lot of students who worked half a day and went to school half a day. Um, I know one of my best friends worked at A T and T, starting in high school, and she's going to have her thirty years in this year, you know, and she's got a had a very good career by starting off at A T and T in high school, doing the work-study program. However, this is a bit different. Um, it will get into work-study programs, but they want all students to have work-based learning experiences throughout high school. So part of what they needed to do was free up time for students to be able to have these experiences. So you'll see where they've made some shifts in diploma requirements and the way that you can um, demonstrate mastery with diploma requirements as well. So they said they needed to rethink the high school diploma because fewer students were enrolling in higher education and even fewer were graduating. And they felt it was because they didn't see the relevance or weren't very prepared. They said that students are graduating without the skills needed to secure rewarding career opportunities. And what they mean by that is that they weren't graduating from high school with those work-based learning credentials. So for example, um, they would rather than become a certified nurse assistant while they're in high school. They want them to complete one to two years of a an apprenticeship in high school. So for example, if they go into the construction trades, they would want them to start that at sixteen. If they're going to go um, work in the mill um, to be an operator or something with the steelworkers, you mean? They want them to start at sixteen. And I know many people sitting here would probably say, well, how are they going to go through those jobs? Because they have to be eighteen or older to get in there. Well, the state legislators are passing some laws um, to make getting uh, workman's comp insurance easier and to allow for sixteen-year-olds to start in the workplace. Much of this is modeled after the Swiss Modern Youth Apprenticeship Program. So the I D O E, along with many other legislators, have gone to Switzerland several times since twenty seventeen and are working with the Swiss government on how they implement uh, work-based learning. So they want to do it pretty robustly, but we're not there yet. What you have to remember about their system is that, you know, they've spent decades perfecting that system. And they have many business bins um, and other apprenticeship programs all on board. That's still something we have to do, but they said if we wait until it was perfect, that we would never get started. So they said we just need to start and try to develop this uh, better and better every year. And then they also wanted to address high chronic absenteeism because nine through twelve graders have had the worst attendance, especially since COVID. Um, and they feel it's because they're not getting um, very engaged in the high school curriculum, that they can see through COVID, that they can do their work quickly online, and that they would rather be out having work-based learning experiences. So, okay. So as you see, they said that fewer students were enrolling in higher education and even fewer were graduating. So they said seventy-six percent of Hoosier High School graduates say they intend to go to college. Only fifty-three percent statewide were actually going. And twenty-four percent of those who enrolled in a two-year college graduated on time. Now, you got to remember that on time for them means that all of these students should be going to school full-time and not just going part-time and working. So they feel if stu- what they're judging us against is students going to school full-time, not part-time. And they said fifty-one percent enroll in a four-year um, degree or graduating on time. Hold on one second. So for Calumet's data um, in of twenty twenty-three, we had eighty-one percent employed or enrolled one year after graduation. And we had thirty-eight point five percent enrolled in college. And there was fifty-two point eight percent last year enrolled statewide. So we weren't too far behind the state. Sorry. So again, they said that students are graduating with um, without the skills needed to um, get rewarding careers. So they also are emphasizing that many of the soft skills that students need have not been addressed thoroughly by high schools. Now, I would like to say that for the Lakewood Schools, having implemented the New Tech Learning Model, um, it has a major emphasis on the soft skills, as many people would call them. Um, we are intentional about developing communication skills, about agency, um, developing critical thinkers, collaborators, um, and making sure that students um, can collaborate with one another, that they have written communication, oral communication. So for that, um, I feel like we're pretty well-prepared because we do that K through twelve. Uh, many schools are just going to be embarking on this journey. So fifty-eight percent of jobs also require training beyond high school, but not a four-year de- excuse me, four-year degree, so like a short-term credential. So they feel that if they made the diplomas more flexible, that we could get a lot of those short-term credentials while kids are in high school. And so the opportunity ahead is that they are hoping that more students will take dual credits while in high school. So the goal is that they would earn a short-term credential by earning fifteen to eighteen dual credits. So taking five to six college credits while they're in high school. Um, it's it's a goal of the state, so they would like about sixty percent of students to be able to earn a a credential of value while they're in high school. And they are hoping that uh, five percent of the students earn a credential before they graduate. Um, as far as earning like the Indiana College Core, um, an associate's degree is um, where they're kind of going with that. What we have to remember is that to have dual credits in high school, a teacher has to be dual credit certified. If and so to be dual credit certified, a teacher has to have a master's in the content area in which they're teaching the dual credit. So for example, if you're getting an English dual credit, you need a master's in English. If you're going to take a communications dual credit, there's a master's in communication, not English. If it's going to be a dual credit in chemistry, the teacher has to have a master's in chemistry, not just a master's in science. So the state has been trying for hmm, I believe about eight or nine years now. They keep moving the deadline of when teachers have to be fully credentialed to teach dual credits. Right now, Ivy Tech um, has some flexibility if teachers don't have that master's yet. But supposedly, by next year is when that is due. So we have currently five teachers who are qualified to teach dual credit. And only two of those have the masters in the content area. So if we want teachers to teach the dual credit and meet these benchmarks, then we have to find some way to help our teachers get dual credit licensed, which means getting that masters in the content area. And none of this has funding, by the way. So just so you know that, uh, there are several districts who are working with um, colleges and universities to provide these masters, and they're paying for them uh, for the teachers and then also incentivizing them by adding money um, on their base. We do have money on the base if teachers earn their dual credit um, credential, but right now, we don't have a means to pay for the masters. Um, which it's difficult for teachers to pay for that. Um, it it's a lot of money, about ten to twelve thousand dollars to get a masters in the content area. And about two to three years to do that if you're going part-time. So it's a lot of time, money, a little bit on their base. So if you look, let's kind of go into what are these diplomas requiring?
You have this one in front of you in your paper.
It's giving me act back. Okay. Okay. Okay, head over here. So on this side, when you're looking at the paper, this is pretty much our traditional. I might just have that. Okay, can you go back one second right now? Okay, there we go. Okay. So here's the the current Indiana diploma and the core body requirement. There's not too much of a difference over here. Um, they changed a little bit about the English credits, so they want students to have a communication credit, two credits in English nine, but they're being a bit more flexible. Um, as far as, oh, does it have to be English ten that you earn those credits in, English eleven? They're saying you can get speech. Um, you can take a writing class, that there are certain types of literature that you would like to learn more about. You can be more flexible in the English credits. Of course, you have to have teachers to teach all these different courses. Um, and so with our current um, sides of our district and our high school, we can only offer so many different English classes. Uh, right now, we have four English teachers at the high school. So, you know, there's limited options. Plus, we're supposed to teach A P dual credit as well, um, so that kind of going into this mix too. For math, if you notice, we used to have to have the two credits in algebra, two credits in geometry, two credits in Algebra Two. The state has now said you can have two credits in Algebra One, one credit in personal finance, and then four additional math credits. So they're no longer saying you have to get geometry and algebra. However, the colleges, most of the colleges are saying you still have to have that. Um, but some are looking into more flexible options, such as data analysis, um, statistics, or other math classes that you could take. However, you're going to need geometry and Algebra Two in order to do those classes as well. So more than likely, most students will continue on the same math path, and then they'll have to add in a personal finance credit. As far as your science credits, they pretty much stayed the same. Uh, your social studies, they have dropped E C R. Um, and then they have dropped one credit in P E. So now you'd only have to have one um, P E credit and one health and wellness credit as opposed to a whole year of P E. And you'll see that they shifted some of these credits down to your twelve elective credits, um, where they would like the students to take C T E, um, personalized learning goals. So based on whatever their career pathway is going to be. And you'll also see that they want them taking um, college and careers. We're doing that right now in eighth grade. Another emphasis that is not on this paper, um, but that you guys need to know because this also impacts um, staffing and in our middle school, is they would like students to take as many high school credits in seventh and eighth grade as they possibly can, so that they can have room, once they get to high school, to maybe take half the day off, four days off, um, throughout their schedule and also uh, trying to have uh, flexibility to go do longer internships. So for example, if they want to take all of second semester of their senior year off, or maybe the whole senior year to go do an apprenticeship with the homeowners union, they can go do that because they will have finished more and more of their credits in seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth grade. So that's the kind of flexibility they're looking for. Um, right now, we have preparing for college and careers and a computer science four credit in eighth grade. Um, and we're looking to expand that, but as you know, if you're going to offer high school credits in middle school, then you have to have teachers who are high school teachers in the middle school. So it requires more staffing. And again, all of this is unfunded. It's when we get into the second sheet that a lot of the changes um, to the new diplomas um, are more evident. So right here, they're saying if you earn this diploma right here, you're you're going to be somewhat career ready. Somewhat college-ready. If you really want to be college, career, or enlistment-ready, they expect you to earn one of the honors seals in one of those three areas. If you're going to be an academic honors or technical honors um, student, then you would earn an honor seal plus. So the thinking is that every student should earn some type of honor seal. This is where these new diplomas get complicated because as you see, like some of these things, you are not going to know if you meet them until the end of your senior year. For example, taking third credits in A P. Well, you may not know your A P scores in your senior A P class um, until May of your senior year. And what happens if it's that one thing you need in order to get that seal and you don't get it? Well, what they're saying is, well, then do the things in the employment as a backup. So that means you would be on two tracks at once. Maybe being able to bounce back and forth if one or the other doesn't work out. Or if you want to earn both. So when you think about that, if you go to the employment, it says that for the employment seal, you have to complete a hundred and fifty hours of work-based learning. Well, then that means we got to make sure, even if you're in the enrollment side, you're completing some of those dollars of work-based learning, your freshman and sophomore year and junior year, just in case we have to lean in on that employment side. So some of the things we're discussing is how can we use what we are going to call school-based enterprise? So how can we partner with Chartwell's, A B M, our I T department, the business department, the curriculum department? Um, how can we partner with NYSIC, our elementary school, our middle school, um, our bookkeepers to help get kids' work-based learning experiences in many different careers inside the school setting? Now, that's going to take quite a bit of juggling because we want to, what what we're realizing is that freshmen and sophomores will need to get about twenty-five hours each year in work-based learning activities. And they're saying those need to be in about groups of three to five. So you're talking about having to rotate kids through throughout the year um, to work with all of our partners and people in the school setting to try to get those hours. Otherwise, you're talking about having to send the kids out to get those on-the-job work-based learning. And they're providing funding for transportation. Um, they're not uh, providing us with the employer, so we're going to do that. So we would have to set up all of those partnerships. And you figure all eighteen school districts in Lake County right now are going to be vying for those partnerships. And if you're a business in Griffith, for example, the first kids you're probably going to service are Griffith kids. You know, and so for us to have to go outside of our community because we don't have a lot of business and industry inside the community, it can be pretty difficult. So we're going to have to think about how we can do a lot of this work ourselves um, within our district and make these opportunities available to our students. And you'll also see that um, besides meeting academics, um, like in the employment, second part right here, it says that students have to meet an attended school. They have not clarified what that means yet. If it means that a student has to be um, a model attendee, that would mean that they could miss no more than nine days each year of high school. We're not sure how they're going to interpret that, but if that's the case, if a kid has a serious illness, then that could possibly knock them out of the employment track. Then what? Um, yeah, yeah. Yeah. If they're work-based learning? Yeah. If we could get them in, though, yeah. Yeah, I mean, what we do have to remember is that we have to have eighteen different school districts with, I think, I think there's over twenty thousand juniors and seniors just in Lake County. So when we're talking about trying to get into internships with construction trades or the pipe builders or the plumbers, there's only going to be so many students that they're going to be able to take. So while this is ambitious, um, what I will say is that in Indianapolis, because they've been doing a lot of this work down there and a lot of those school districts have been on the committee going to Switzerland, they have worked a lot with Indianapolis and the surrounding areas and those businesses to get this uh, off the ground. But they're about the only place, um, that hasn't really happened anywhere else yet. So we haven't had like Lake County meetings on how we're going to work with this and this uh, to get this off of the ground. That hasn't happened yet, even though it's starting next year. Um, so there's a lot of places where this is going to be a heavy lift for the school districts until we can coordinate all those services um, with our eighteen different school districts. Um, as far as the honor seal plus, um, it's a drastic change from uh, the regular honors diploma. Because you'll see that they, that an honor student now under enrollment has to earn either an associate's degree, a technical certificate, the Indiana College Core, or be an A P scholar with distinction. And that's like taking six A P courses that score four or higher. Um, which is pretty difficult to do, plus the seventy-five um, which is pretty difficult to do, plus the seventy-five hours of work-based learning. And, um, it would be fairly doable for us to demonstrate their development in the school-wide learning outcomes for communication, collaboration, and work ethic. But getting that Indiana College Core or Associate's Degree, if we don't have teachers or dual-credit certified, is gonna be difficult. And if we don't have them, then we have to offer the students to go to Ivy Tech or to IUN or Purdue Northwest, and we have to pay for that because it's a diploma requirement. And then that becomes part of your fine and appropriate education. So that, I know I haven't gotten into everything. You guys can read this, and please feel free to come to me with questions. I can tell you that it's pretty overwhelming for us at the school level, um, to take all of this in with no additional funding, because these are, these are heavy lifts, especially for students who have high needs. Um, because we want them to be able to reach this, but now we have to think about, okay, how do we scaffold this all the way back to pre-k? You know, so that our students, by the time they get to high school, they're basically college-ready. Because a lot of these, to earn the Indiana College Core, you need to start your dual-credits as freshmen. Okay, you're welcome. Hold on, I have some more. I should be thinking of that. Just a few more. We could totally, a lot of this is just digging into what we just dug into, but I did want to hit a couple points about, you know, who are the students that we serve, that we are going to try to be getting to earn these new diploma types. And, um, in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, you see that we're pretty racially diverse. We served ninety-three percent when we reduced lunch, when we only served sixty-six percent in two thousand and six. I mean, some things to note here is that our poverty has drastically increased in our district. And with poverty, um, comes more risks. Um, so our students have a lot of needs. We have nine, nineteen point eight-three percent of our students, um, have a disability. Nine point three percent are either homeless or in foster care, and about six point seven percent are language minority. Some of these other pieces, um, at the academics, oop, could you roll that back one time, bring it? Okay, um, you guys have heard from the principals, but some data you haven't heard is that our rates of poverty are three times the national average. We have forty-three percent of children living in poverty, when we only have thirty-two point six in two thousand and nine for our district. We have two times more than the state average of students in, in, living in poverty, and one point five times more than the Lake County average. And of our students living in poverty, almost half have income that's significantly below the poverty level. So we have some of the most at-risk kids in the whole state. I don't know how else to emphasize that, but we are one of the most impoverished districts in the state. Some data suggests that the only place, every school district that has more impoverished kids than us is Gary Community Schools. So they would be the most impoverished, we're the second most impoverished. And those are important to note, because we have to, we have to meet more needs in order for our kids to reach these, um, academic milestones. So what does that mean? If you guys wanna take a look at this, I can send this to you. And the Albert Schenker Institute of School Finance takes into account the, um, community characteristics, along with the, uh, per pupil funding that we get from the state and federal level, and they take into account our test scores. And they come up with an index. So according, as far as what is needed to educate the students in order for them to meet the expectations of the state and federal government. And according to this complicated one more, which you can read all about on their website, we would move an additional ten thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars per student based on twenty twenty-one funding. It, it's absolutely more now because of the impact of COVID. Um, so we are forty-four percent, um, in the hole with what funding is necessary if we want our students to reach these academic outcomes. And I just wanted to give you a comparison to Griffith, because we can say, well, that's right next door. And I know a lot of the times when, um, parents or community members are seeing what services we have, what we're spending money on, you know, they'll say, well, this school district doesn't do that, or this school district doesn't have that. Why can't we do more like this or that? Well, their community char- characteristics are much different in Griffith. And as you'll see with this same formula, they're only eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars in the hole as far as what they're missing for funding to have, have their students reach those expectations. And that's because of their community demographics. Many of their students are coming ready to school. Ours are not coming ready for school, starting in kindergarten all the way through. So you'll see that even though money doesn't answer everything, money pays for human capital. Human capital is what is necessary in order to educate kids, especially kids at high risk. When we're talking about, um, our data that you've heard many of the principals discuss over the course of these presentations, we made class sizes that are about eighteen to one for many of our tier-two and tier-three students, which right now is over sixty percent of our students, whether it's in behavior, academics, or with, um, attendance, are in need of tier-two or tier-three services. Those students should be in a five-to-one-to-one-to-one ratio. So just to get the eighteen-to-one in our core ELA and math across the, across K through eight, we would need eight more teachers. If we included high school, we would need twelve more teachers, and that's just to serve as ELA and math. That's not including what we would need to help students who are having behavior needs, um, or attendance needs. And that would be about one point two million dollars more that we would need in funding just to help ELA and math. So we could go into a lot more, um, such as where our students are with social emotional risk, as you'll see here. Um, besides the academics, some of the things that principals didn't get to talk about is that when we did the savers to figure out what risk students had, we did this with all students, um, K through, two teachers pulled this out, three through twelve students, let us know what they're struggling with. And this aligns to all of the academic and behavior data we're seeing. And we see that the emotional at-risk is the most, um, the, the biggest area of need. Sixty-five percent of students in the high school are saying they're emotionally at-risk. Ninety percent of the middle school students reported that they are depressed, have anxiety, suicidal ideation, um, that's what they're talking about right here. And we had sixty-seven percent of the students at Bonfellow were reported at risk, but one hundred percent of the third and fourth graders self-reported that they are emotionally at-risk. I mean, that young already feeling that heavy emotional toll. And we already know that many of our students, um, have ongoing trauma. Um, and that is also tied to being in poverty, food scarcity, no access to healthcare. Um, Gary is a mental health shortage area. So even when we say, well, can parents take their kids to go see a therapist? There are, and you know, I believe there are two children's mental health therapists in all of Gary, outside of the school. So they just don't exist, and if you don't have transportation and we don't have good public transportation, where are they supposed to go? So a lot of these services, they want us to provide in the school. And that, we've grouped towards that model with other funds and other funds that we've had as well. So I know we went over some of this, and I, um, I know this, the principals went over the academic data. Some of the teacher data, like, who are we able to do this with? Because I'm trying to save time. Dr. Shirley, I know you want me to wrap up. Um, who are our teachers? Um, coming out of COVID, we had seventy percent of our teachers were new to Bonfellow and the middle school. We had seventy percent on emergency permits, and fifty-nine percent of our staff had three years or less coming out of COVID. So when you look at a lot of our academic data, this is why we're in the hole. We did not have certified teachers or people who had been here to help our kids transition and make up for the learning loss due to COVID. And it still wasn't much better last year. We have finally gotten a stable staff just this year. And that isn't to say that everybody on our staff is perfect, um, that they have all that they need, because we still have a lot of teachers who are not master teachers yet. It takes five to seven years to become a master teacher. And, you know, we just have a few teachers. This eight percent of teachers in zero to three years experience shifted drastically from the sixty-two point five percent. But this shift is because they now have four years' experience. You know, it isn't because we have, uh, a, a, a school full of master teachers, just so we know. So, um, here we also were able to get, uh, work with trying, oops, and we were able to get ten teachers, uh, certified, um, last year. So that, that helped us, um, to get, to get their license. Oh, got it, okay. So as far as what our office does, we use all of these funds to help do everything that we do to educate students. And this di- this pyramid here lets you know most of the things that we're doing, the, the overview of what we're doing to help all students, the kids who are struggling at tier-two and the kids who are struggling at tier-three. This graphic right here, which I would be happy to go over with anyone who would like to go over individually, digs more into the specifics of what we're doing for academics, behavior, attendance, student lobbying, um, and how we're monitoring the data every week to every day to see who's in need and how do we help them so that they can reach the academic, um, goals that we have for them. But it's more than just, you know, providing perfect English tutoring. You know, if a student doesn't have the self-regulation because of their ongoing trauma, to be able to relax their brain and their body to be able to learn, then we have to help them learn self-regulation skills. That requires therapists, that requires teachers who have to be trained in how to create calming classrooms, and how to support those needs of students who may, many would say, oh, they must be ADE or AVH D, when really it's a lot of trauma, you know, and so teachers have to be trained, our staff has to be trained. Um, and they want eighty percent of our students to fall within this normal range. However, our pyramid right now is upside down. Um, so we have a lot of students in need, and like I said, we're, we have a lot of staff who are novice. So it makes it difficult. Um, it, it, we're trying to make sure we support people the best that they can. Um, and, oop, can you go back one again? Um, we have the New Tech Network here, uh, monthly to coach our leadership staff. They're here six times a year onsite to help our teachers understand good pedagogy. We have monthly instructional coaching and teacher leadership development programs with them. We're going to different summits. We are working with Twenty First Century Ed on integrating, uh, STEM and STEAM, um, opportunities for our students. We're in the I D O E literacy cadre, where helping our teachers get literacy endorsed, K through twelve. Um, we run it on the I D O E Learning Lab for professional development online, our professional organizations that are helping us with PD. At in-house, two times a week, our teachers are in collaborative plan times with instructional leadership staff. Uh, two times a week, they're after-school. Six times a year, they're doing e-learning days where they're engaged in learning, like today, so they can learn how to become master teachers. We do the three days of summer PD, and we do two times a month with our curriculum and assessment team and student behavior support team, so that we can help them learn and understand all that they have to support. And we also have weekly, um, comprehensive school counseling team meetings and meetings two times a month with Dr. Shirley, where we're engaged in everything from safety, academics, uh, food service, we're, we're all learning together. And then we also have fun satisfied for teachers, um, if they want to do planning, the after-school, teacher mentoring, and various different coaching positions that we pay stipends for. So we try to make sure that we're helping the learning and development of all staff, so that, can we go back one? So that we can meet the needs of all stu- all students. One, one up, bring it. Run, one back. Oh, back one. One more. Back. There we go. Um, and what I wanted to note is a lot of times people are saying, well, you know, why are you doing all this with students? Like, we hear things about having to help them with their behaviors, having to help them with academics, um, having to help them with their well-being. Well, I can tell you that all of this is part, these are all part of federal and state laws. That's why. Um, and I just wanna give an example. So this whole MTSS process where we have to watch this data. So for example, every week, we have to look at grades, attendance, behavior, um, and academics as far as their assessments go. And we have to triangulate that data to see which kids are in need. Are they not doing well in their ways, not coming to school, and getting in trouble? Okay, so they may have a trifecta there. They're hitting three out of the four areas, so they need a lot of help. We have to monitor this data every week. And according to the Free and Appropriate Education Act, it's along, along with IDA and Section five oh four and the American with Disabilities Act and the Civil Rights Act, we are required to provide kids the supports they need to change their behavior, change their academic outcomes, and improve their attendance. So if students are showing that they have a need and we don't provide those interventions to help change the behavior, change their academics, uh, change their attendance, then we are out of compliance with the law. So sometimes people will say, well, why isn't that student getting suspended? Well, they may have slept through the cracks, and we may have not triangulated the data right. And when we go back to look, we're like, oh, that kid was showing all these signs, and we didn't provide any interventions. And we have to provide the interventions before you can go to a suspension. Because they're saying if you would have done that in the first place and paid attention to the data, it could have been that the kid wouldn't have gotten, uh, into those behaviors that got them into trouble, because they would have been supported correctly, because they're saying behaviors are required for help. So sometimes we just need to understand that there is a process we have to legally go through in order to ensure our students are getting their needs met. And sometimes it doesn't always make sense to somebody on the outside as to why things are happening the way that they are. We are giving money to educate our students, and they don't care if it's not enough. They're saying these are all the things you have to do. And it can be very, very complicated, because when you're looking at all of this data all of the time, it's a lot to look at, and then you're talking about novice staff who don't always know what to do to help the kids. And so if they're not providing interventions that are working, we're supposed to change it until it does work. So I, I just ask you to bear with us sometimes and have some understanding that there's a lot of laws, a lot of data, and a lot of training we're trying to do to help our staff understand what we have to do to help our kids reach the end in mind, which will hopefully be the new future of diploma. Yeah.
I was just gonna ask you, since you mentioned about suspensions and sometimes, you know, people are wondering. Does that also include expulsion as well? Like, we ever had a student expelled for a few months and then we bring him back after we review all of the data and stuff like that?
Yeah, so, so before you can do any expulsion now, um, you have to do what's called a behavior threat assessment. Um, and the formalizing that even greater, beginning with July one. Uh, but that process is already in place. It's just not, it's not as formalized and rigorous as it's going to have to be July one. However, because we know what's coming, uh, we have to be sure, when you know, you have to, when you know better, you have to do better. We know. Um, and so with the behavior threat assessments, it's, it's a very, very thorough process. Um, and so with the behavior threat assessments, it's, it's a very, very thorough process that you have to do a lot of psychological evals, interviews with parents, looking into the discipline history, looking into psychological history, where you have to see if the student is actually a viable threat. So, for example, um, just because a student's been, hmm, if they say something like, I'm gonna go up to school. You have to figure out, are they saying this out of anger? Do they have the means? Have they ever exhibited behaviors that indicate that that's something they can really do? Um, what psychological evaluations have you done? All of, it's a very lengthy process. Um, and when you're done with it, it's about a thirty to forty-page document that you have on a student where you've had to evaluate very thoroughly to determine, is this a true threat? Because what they have found is that many people who commit acts of violence against school, like school shooters, um, you'll find that they were frequently suspended or expelled and asked your size from the school community, which did not help. So they're saying the more you can get kids' relationships with the school, make them feel cared about, supported, and integrated into the school community, the more likely you're going to change that behavior if they are leaning more towards a viable threat. But most of the time what you find through this whole process is that it's not a viable threat, meaning that they have the means to actually carry it out, they have the psychological diagnosis and mindset that, uh, say, a sociopath, for example. Yeah, you bring in the law, you bring in experts, you have to have a school resource on that team, you have to, a resource officer, you have to have, uh, teachers, special education teachers, administrators, school counselors, therapists, I mean, they all have to be a part of that. And, and then parent interviews, then, like, do you look at all school records? And, I mean, the reason for this is because they're trying to keep kids in school so that they don't become school shooters. Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I could have gone deeper into this, but feel free to ask me questions if you need to, because I don't type this much. Yeah, okay. That's right. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
We touched the surface of what we have, uh, if we can, like you said, we'll have your back. I'll go in the back.
Okay.
But I don't want to shortchange anything else that we have on our list, that's all right.
Well, Reagan, only thing, can you just real quickly, while Eric is coming, because a lot of yours was entwined in this presentation.
Right.
But can you just kind of share how the monies work with?
Yeah, I absolutely will. Uh, we had, of course, as many of you know, uh, after COVID, we had relief funds. That was a, uh, big purse of money for being able to launch some things. Uh, that money is gone now, which is, uh, yes, the ESR funds are, are, uh, done. Uh, the only thing that's trailing right now is, uh, continuing to pay for the remainder of the budget that we had for our secure entries. Uh, we were able, with those funds, to get, uh, all the curriculum materials that lasted for a couple of years, uh, in ELA and math, uh, so that was very fortunate. Um, title, the title grants, uh, with all of them that we have, uh, pay for, what did we figure out? Cindy probably, uh...
They, they pay for about, um, almost a hundred percent of our instructional coaches, our deans.
Yes, yeah, our deans.
And then, um, the ESR funds afforded us quite a bit more, social workers, school counselors. You'll see on the third to last page, on the bottom, anything that's highlighted, I put the number of parentheses, that if you don't have those grant funds, that's how many of those people we would have.
So you can see...
As you'll see, it is a lot of zeros.
We, we lose probably about twenty staff if we don't have federal funding.
Some of that was tied to ESR, so we're still trying to figure out how...
As we, we continue to write grants, we have the, the, uh, Congress of School Counsel Grant, the, uh, bipartisan grant, the BASCAP, as we call it. Uh, are two that are helping us, uh, bridge that gap to alleviate some of the sudden, um, loss of, of the ESR funding stream. Uh, and it just means that our department's gonna have to keep writing, 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 uh, to keep our, uh, staff intact, because as you can see, we're already short-staffed for what the needs are for our, our students, uh, so...
And Cindy, just say, this is, uh, and I think it's good for the community to know this, every child represents a certain amount of dollars. Every time we lose a child, that dollar amount goes out the door. Does that mean we keep everything that because of the money? It's not about the money, but the money is what's important to your school.
And to emphasize what Dr. Shirley is saying, because you get the money per pupil, they expect that money to go to that child's free and appropriate education to give them the services they require in order to be successful in school. So you can't just say, well, we got the money and now we're not gonna educate them, even though they can be difficult, even though they can have a lot of needs. That's what that money is for.
That money follows that child, right? It goes right out the door, so they don't get to keep it.
Right, so, uh, just looking at, uh, and this is an Adrian thing, looking at the basic tuition funding from the state, but if we were to only have those who are, uh, with us from within our borders, uh, we'd have to eliminate twenty-five to thirty percent of our staff. So, the money is absolutely critical for us to continue serving our case.
About the different buckets of money and how things are spent. People need to understand that, you know? It, it's really hard, because we hear all the time, you know, they're out of district. If it wasn't for those out-of-district students, we probably couldn't function.
That's very likely true.
Because when you're looking at all of the diploma requirements, those diploma requirements are, whether you have ten students or you have thousands of students. But there is research that has been done for a very long time now that says that an ideal high school must be between five hundred and a thousand students to offer appropriate programming. You cannot bring in the funding necessary to have all of the different credit types and programming such as sports, things like that, that get students very involved, if you don't have at least five hundred students in a high school. And that same goes to elementary schools.
It is important for the community, those that are online, those that are here, uh, to really watch these bills that are coming out as proposals, because they're really gonna impact the funding that's coming in here. The property tax, yeah, may be good for the community, but what it does, if less taxes coming into the school district, there goes more funding in the school. Right now, there are some bills, and, um, I'll just tell you this right now, um, next board meeting, February twenty-fourth, we're gonna have a town hall meeting via FaceTime, and people are gonna be able to call in and ask their questions. The purpose of this is to try to get people to understand how impactful, right now, what is going on in the legislation, uh, for you to pay attention and make those calls and let people know those that you like, those that you don't like. They need to hear from their constituents, because we are losing and we going out the doors backwards. So, just thought I'd throw that out.
Good.
Thank you so much. We're going on to Eric, Eric Johnson and Communications.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. Um, as I, can everybody, as I began this, uh, slideshow, Cindy has already very thoroughly addressed a lot of the issues that we have, um, that our students come to school with. Uh, but there's a, just a little bit I wanna add to that, and that is, the traditional schools that we all grew up with, with, they no longer exist. Okay, now there are things like chart, voucher, choice. So, you grew up in a neighborhood where, hey, from maybe kindergarten through middle school to high school, you went to school in your neighborhood. Those days are gone. The traditional school now is, you got students that they just alluded to, that come in from out of district. We have out-of-district students who leave our district and go to other schools. So we have to promote our school as the best choice for parents to send here. We have to be all about providing a great education and letting people know how great our education is here at Lake Ridge. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to look at the year so far, the great things happening at Lake Ridge New Tech Schools. Now, let's see, I hope I can, uh, here we go. Now, this is how we start the school year. We always start the school year with convocation. The reason we do that is because we have to have staff buy-in, because as the principals have said, Cindy has just said, the task of educating our students can sometimes seem monumental. So we all have to be on the same page, because we are one. And this is an example of that. We have a convocation at the very beginning of the school year, and with that, we have a motivational speaker. The motivational speaker, uh, lifts everyone up, we get our charge and what our plan is for the year, and then we move on to, uh, start school. And here we are with a picture of, at the end of the convocation, everybody takes selfies, and this was it, this was our staff doing that. And it, what it does really is it creates camaraderie among the staff, uh, because, you know, they say, in, in, in war, you know, they say you fight for the person next to you. And in the education war, teachers fight for the teacher next to them, for the administrator next to them. And here's Dr. Shirley, every year we get a trophy, and this year the trophy went to the elementary school. They had a really nice, uh, pep rally, where they were like on a roller coaster and, well, this is a traveling trophy, so, unknown is in the hands of Longfellow Elementary School. And this is something that we do, because we want the community to feel free to come into the school. And we have the ability here at Lake Ridge, a lot of that's because of superintendent, bond, and staff, we, we put together things. A circus actually came to Lake Ridge, Calumet High School. This is the Universal Soul Circus, and they came, and, and you're going to see, there were a lot of happy people who came into the school. Why do we do that? Why do we invite people? Because we want our parents to feel that they are, they are a part of the school corporation and that the school corporation is a part of the community. Because if we lose the school corporation, believe you may folks, this community will suffer. And here's another picture. This guy, these clowns, they just ran right upon me, I thought, it was quick, but these are some of the clowns that were there. And, uh, this was an excellent, uh, this is the kind of quality circus that we got at, at with the Universal Soul Circus and the juggler here. And this is what we, we had happy people. These were families that came out and they enjoyed themselves. The superintendent got a chance to talk to the parents, to tell them that, hey, this time next year, we'll have our auditorium. This current field house is going to get a, a makeover. So we, this gives us an opportunity to talk to the parents that we have, to let them know that we're with them and we want to hear from them. More happy parents and families. And this was, they brought people out on the floor to do a dance-off, and this was, you know, the circus, people enjoying themselves right here at our school, here in Calumet. Even these people were happy, and I know these people, sometimes they're not happy. And this is the, the homecoming, our traditional homecoming. Everyone loves homecoming. Every one of us in here who graduated from high school, we all remember homecoming and we are keeping the tradit-, the tradition alive. Um, Forty First Avenue was filled this year with parents and families sitting along the parade route. I really do believe that we had more students involved in the, uh, homecoming festivities this year. I think some of that, this is just my novice, yes, I think some of that's because we don't have cell phones, students are more connected, because they, they are not so busy looking at their phone all day. And here's another picture, just more of our homecoming. And who's that? That was the football pep rally, that's Coach Charles Selly and, of course, our board president, Kilmoosting, giving our football team a pep rally, annual anthem as well, so that was, that was always good. These are part of our homecoming festivities. And this is Dr. Shirley attending, uh, the, the, uh, day of the pep rally with the football players. And here we are, because we like to get our youngest students involved. This was at Longfellow during Homecoming Week. And so as the students got off the bus or out of their cars with their parents, the cheerleading squad and the varsity football team was there to cheer the students on. And the kids, they loved it, well, some were too shy to even do it, but most of them ran through there like Philadelphia Eagles. I mean, they were, they were, they were really happy and they were really involved. And here is the traditional ride of the football team on the fire truck, and we thanked our Lake Ridge Fire Department and the Police Department, the County Sheriff, for their, uh, the ambulance services, all for their input and their assistance in helping to make our pep rally a success. And I do feel like Homecoming was a huge success this year. And here we are at the Longfellow, and at the beginning of school year and, and on through the school year, it's very important that we have our, uh, open houses. And here it is, a parent, this is Miss Coleman, who was last year's Teacher of the Year in the pink, talking to a parent. And then, uh, another parent, and I, I don't wanna butcher her name, Miss Garchus. And, how do you pronounce that part?
Reginald.
Reginald. She is, and she had students and parents in her class. And there is, uh, this is Mr. Wilson at the, uh, middle school. In the background there, you see, uh, Mr. Stevens. And there's a superintendent talking to, uh, parents. This was in early October, and I believe Dr. Shirley, you were telling them that they had to sign up by a certain date, because we like to keep our parents informed of the things that they needed to sign up for, uh, some kind, I don't remember exactly what it was, but it was something you wanted them to sign up for in early October so that we could get some funding. And this is the call we had, that's a good call. When you see people come out like that, they come out for information and we try to provide them with that information. So, it's not like parents are not interested. Parents will come out when we have something for them to, to see and do. And there, uh, also at the middle school, uh, they are signing up parents for the PTA, which is very important. And here it is, we have to talk about the improvements that we're making in our school. That is a new coat, new paint at Longfellow. It looks nice, doesn't it? And that was early, that was in like, you know, middle... And that was early, that was in like, you know, middle fall, as you can see the leaves hadn't begun to change yet. But our schools, we were doing work and thank you Adrian for getting that. A lot of it, you know all the numbers and the figures. We've talked about that in previous board meetings. But we do this because it is the philosophy of the superintendent and the administrative staff, that we make our schools look as good as schools in other districts because we want our students and parents to feel proud about sending their children to our schools. And this is just more work that was being done. It's actually completed now. So if you go up to the, uh, elementary, up to Longfellow, you'll see that, you know, it really looks nice up there. And that is a, an air conditioning unit, uh, that they were installing on the roof. And here at the middle school, if you see that little dot in the air, that is the Lake County helicopter coming in for a landing, uh, that we had at, uh, the middle school for Career Day. And here is, uh, at the high school, a, uh, open house. And people are, uh, you know, two, uh, teachers are explaining, uh, the, you know, testing and what, what students need to know and do to be prepared for testing. And here's the superintendent, it's a great year for the superintendent. This is the superintendent down in Indianapolis. This is for the, uh, preparing the future of superintendents in the state of Indiana. And it was for people of color. This was the first time, uh, that this has happened. It will, uh, it is scheduled to happen again. The superintendent was the chair, uh, of the event and the host of it. And this was sponsored by the Indiana Superintendent, Indiana Association of Public School Superintendents. Again, that was at Madame CJ Walker Theater in downtown Indianapolis. And, uh, this was just preparing, it was the preparing for the future conference, uh, for administrators to get more administrators, uh, of color involved in being administrators in schools. And here, um, Ms. Trevino was there and she helped the superintendent tremendously. And, uh, steps over by staff was there, uh, also in support. And this is one of the functions that was going on with more of our staff. And this was a, a very, uh, a huge award, uh, for the superintendent. This was the Lawrence P. Burp Award. And this was given by the Indiana Association of School Board. And, uh, Ms. Osteen nominated the superintendent for, and that is the, again, that is the, uh, Roy Burp Award. And, uh, let's see, next, this is the superintendent with her husband and daughter, Carlos and Marsha Riley. At Indiana University Bloomington, where the superintendent got the Distinguished Educator Award from the Indiana University Department of Education. I consider that an international award because IU Bloomington is an international school. And there's superintendent along with the, uh, other awardees. Now moving on, we are now in the month of October, no, no, I'm sorry. ELL, this is something that, uh, Reagan, uh, is, is, it helps to sponsor basically. It is ELL night, English Language Learners. The majority of our English language learners speak Spanish. And every year, uh, the ELL department under, uh, Linda Holbrook, who is the coordinator for the program, they have a really nice festivity to bring the parents and the students in, to socialize and, uh, feel welcome in the community. It's always a success. And, uh, these, uh, these pictures are of these families who come out and enjoy the evening. And always, you know, they have turkey giveaways, thanks to, um, a lot of our sponsors. And, uh, okay, I guess, I'll go back. Okay, and this was, this young man was sponsored, that sweatshirt that he has on, actually our brotherage right across the street gave us those shirts to, to give away. Uh, those were shirts that they hadn't sold. And so, um, Mr. Obed asked me if I would like the shirts. I said, of course. And they really went, well, uh, he also had some Griffin shirts and he asked me if I wanted those, but of course, I said no. And so here it is, this is Thanksgiving, we have a great Thanksgiving Day Community Dinner. And this year's was, well, a lot happened. So there they are, our students getting ready to serve. And the community was there, everything was looking good. And when I say serve, they had the turkey, dressing, all the trimmings, cake, pies, you name it, they had it. And here are some of our teachers that get involved, they were making, they were baking the turkeys and cooking. And then right after next, well, we had a power outage. Not just here at Calumet, but throughout the entire Calumet township area. The power just went out. And this was a, to me, this was a fantastic moment for our students because none of them screamed, none of them said anything, you know, like stupid or didn't think. Their reaction was to be very calm. And I thought about that, but to keep in mind that these are students who have been through active shooter drills. These are students who have been through COVID. So their reaction was very professional. And they waited for a couple of seconds and then the, the, uh, Student Senate sponsor, Sophia Minor, um, shouted out in the dark, she said, okay, we're going to serve, uh, the people that are here, pull out your cell phones, we'll do it by flashlight. And then Nicole Williams, who was the co-sponsor of the Student Senate, she said, so everybody get to your station. And they all went to their station and believe it or not, we were serving people. Everyone ate. And then it got to the point where it was said that, okay, you know, because it was dangerous being in the dark. So we started just doing, you know, uh, doggy, what did they call it, you know, and, you know, we just let everybody, you know, take, take home. You know, put doggy bags, but everybody, but that's what they started doing. Now this is our Christmas program and it went really well. And you'll see, I, I have a slide where you can see just how many people, um, were there. And it was, it was great. And the thing about this is it was from all of our students, with the exception of the early childhood, but this is Longfellow, Lake Ridge Middle School and Calumet New Tech High School. All of the combined talents of our students were on display for this Christmas event. And I'm telling you, there were some happy faces there. And it, it was just, it was really well attended, as you'll see here. Look at that, soak that in. That is a lot of people. And those people were happy because a lot of our parents I talked to afterwards and they were saying how nice it was and now we're going to do it again next year. That shows me that when we as a school district reach out to the community, we can get people to come in. If we get people to come in, then we can tell them, we need to do this. We're working with your child on that. The more we do things like this, the better we will have community-school relations. The superintendent was also able to tell those parents that this time next year, we'll be doing this in our very own auditorium, which is going to be fantastic. And that is, uh, Mr. Thompson with one of the singers from, uh, the, uh, elementary school. And there's a happy parent with a happy child. And here's Mr. Wilson, you see he had one of those crazy kinds of, uh, Christmas shirts. Our staff gets involved in it. It's always a big, it's a big event for it to be just the second time we've had the, uh, Christmas show in, uh, in, in several years. This leads us to the middle school. And this is what we do to, to show off our students. These students are stu-, these are students who did well on the standardized test. And they also, these are also students who made the AB Honorable. And the students are very proud. They got, uh, they had an award ceremony, they got a little gift. And, you know, it makes them feel good because they put in the work and they do it in front of their, their fellow classmates. And you hear the other students saying, I'm gonna do it next time, I'm gonna get it next time. So that's a good thing that, that was going on over at, uh, the middle school. And this is, these are more pictures. This young lady right here, guess what folks, she does not speak English. She's one of our ELL students, does not speak English and she made the AB Honorable. So you really gotta give kudos, um, to her. And here's another student who was just really happy and, and, uh, she missed the picture. So I took her, she said, please, please take it. I took it, sure, so I got her in there, she looks really happy. Moving on, now this wraps up our little portion. This is the 100th day of school. Over at the, at Longfellow, on the 100th day of school, the students dress up like old people. And that's Ms. Shire, her kindergarten class. This is another group of students and they look like old people. And then, and then they, they did say, tell me, you look like an old man too. But that's what we do on the 100th day. So, but this is the end of my presentation, I took you to the 100th days. Uh, but I would be remiss if I did not add a couple of slides that were from the 23, 24 school year. And, uh, that's this one. This is the Hard Rock Casino, thanks to our partnership with the Hard Rock Casino. And there's that guitar right there, you seen over there? That's it. Five hundred thousand dollars that we received from the Hard Rock Casino. And we are forever in their debt because of that gen- of their generosity. And as you see, there's, uh, Dr. Shirley, there's Adrian, there's Cindy. And, uh, and I hope I didn't leave anybody else out. My eyesight is getting a little blurry here. Uh, but yeah, and that is the staff, oh, and Mr. Deal. And that is the staff of Hard Rock Casino, their administrators, some members of their administrative staff. And this was something that I think is going to pay off for us forever. That is Donald Thompson on your left, in the center is Tito Jackson. This may be one of the last public appearances that Tito Jackson made because just a couple of months later, after this, just a couple of months after this, he died of a heart attack. And that's Tito and that's his brother, uh, Martin of the Jackson Five. And they came and christened the, um, Jackson Family VPA over at the middle school. And part of that Christmas program that you saw was because of that. And this is my final, um, Donald Thompson. Donald Thompson, you see in the red, he is a music teacher at, uh, the, the middle school. And he is a professional musician. He actually had world renowned credentials. He's playing in other countries. He's, he's very good and he's, is really dedicated to having a visual and performing arts program here. And I'm telling you, next year, with the auditorium and with the efforts of our arts department and our teachers, and all of our teachers that are in that department, we are going to, really, it's going to pay residual to us. And this is the day that all of that started. This is an historic picture. And here it is, this is the final one. This is Dr. Shirley presenting to the Jacksons the visual and performing arts, uh, their, their plaque. So that's it, uh, what I had, I tried to keep this short, Dr. Shirley. Uh, and so if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than willing to, uh, ask them. But the reason we do these things is because we have to let the community know that we are here for them. And we need to bring parents into the school to see what we are doing and see the work that we are doing with their children. Because despite the fact that they may have emotional problems, they may be at risk, they may have trauma, if they come into our school, we can teach them things and we can get them going on the right track. And I do believe that. So thank you very much, if there are any questions, you know I'm not going anywhere, so.
There's one thing I do want to share with the community about the podcasting that we have been doing for the last, what, year and a half?
Yes.
So we, 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 the podcast, we want the podcast.
To grow, where we're talking with, uh, with the people who teach your children, who administer to your children and, uh, getting, getting more people from the district involved in it. And for that, I will turn it over. I mean, I know how to get there, but nobody does that better than the person who sets it up, who is Aaron. Aaron, tell us how to get to the podcast.
Okay, uh, you can get the, to the podcast, um, on our YouTube page or you can go to our main website and click the link there as well.
I could have said that, but it sounds better when he does. All right, thank you very much. Any questions, anything else? Because I'm like a preacher, I can go on and on.
That's a comment, great job, Aaron.
Thank you, good job.
Good stuff, okay. Red and the ghost, then can I move on?
We're gonna go ahead and move on to the superintendent report.
Okay, and we will be brief. Okay, did you have any comments?
He did not have any on time in some of the questions.
And Superintendent and/or School Board member report. Goal Area One, Academics, all learners will continuously demonstrate academic growth. Goal Area Two, Safety, we will provide a safe and secure learning environment for all. Goal Area Three, Equity, we will provide a positive, inclusive and equitable environment for all. Goal Area Four, Communication, we will improve communication and strengthen relationships both internally and externally. Goal Area Five, Finances, we will advocate to increase the financial resources of a corporation to provide an outstanding school environment and opportunities for our students, staff and community. And I think you heard a lot of that tonight. Professional Development, we recommend Kim Osteen attend the ISBA, Indiana School Boards Association State House Day on February 18, 2025 in Indianapolis, Indiana, with expenses paid from the Operations Fund. We recommend Dr. Shirley, Ms. Trevino, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Barmakovich, Mr. Johnson, attend the UNCF, United Negro College Fund Mayor's Breakfast, Northwest Indiana, 2025, on February 12, with expenses paid from the Title II A Fund. Recommend approving of the professional development items.
Make the motion accepted.
And by Ms. Lee, may I have a second?
Second motion.
Second by Mr. Bacon. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Three days, if you are ready, multiple days.
All new employment to Lake Ridge New Tech Schools is contingent upon a cleared expanded criminal history background check within 30 days and a cleared expanded child protection index check within 60 days of an effective date. Indiana Code 20 dash 26 dash 2 dash 1.5 and Indiana Code 20 dash 26 dash 2 dash 1.3. We recommend accepting Christian Albus resignation, uh, from the social worker position at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School effective January 24, 20, I mean, 2025. We recommend Rula Hara Pala be employed as a computer science teacher at Lake Ridge New Tech Middle School effective February 12, 2025. We recommend Nadia Morris be employed as a student supervisor at Longfellow New Tech Elementary at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School, effective February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. We recommend Victoria Nealan be employed as a student supervisor at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School, effective February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. We recommend Ashley Alas or Alias be employed as an instructional aide at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School, effective February eighteen, twenty twenty-five. We recommend, nah, this is messed up, Nautilus Isabel, Isabel Vargas Rodriguez be employed as a library aide at Lake Ridge New Tech Middle School, effective February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Recommend approval of the lease resignation and employment items.
Do you have a motion? Motion by Ms. Nease, may I have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Mr. Bacon, any questions or comments? All in favor, aye. Three aye, we remain, most agree.
Thank you, new business, we recommend approving the twenty twenty-four resolution to transfer funds from rainy day to the Operation Fund. We recommend approving the education to the Operation Fund transfer, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We recommend approving the resolution to transfer appropriations twenty twenty-four Operation Fund. We recommend approving the following fundraisers at Calumet New Tech High School, March third, twenty twenty-five, to March seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Labrade sale for the National Honor Society account. We are recommending granting permission to the Longfellow PTC to conduct the following fundraisers on school property. March third, twenty twenty-five Dairy Queen Grill and Chill fundraiser. April fourth through the seventeenth, twenty twenty-five simple coupon sales. We recommend approving the following fundraisers at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School. March tenth, twenty twenty-five Read-a-thon for the General Student Account. We recommend approving the following donations at Longfellow New Tech Elementary School. January tenth, twenty twenty-five food donation in the amount of a hundred ninety dollars from the Griffith Domino's, Domino's Pizza. January tenth, twenty twenty-five food donation in the amount of a hundred fifty dollars from the Griffith's Aurelio's Pizza. We recommend approving the following fundraisers at Lake Ridge New Tech Middle School, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, to February seventeen, twenty twenty-five double goods sales for the athletic account. February tenth through the fourteenth, twenty twenty-five spiritware sales for the student athletic account. Recommend approval of the new business items.
Make a motion to, uh, recommend the approval of the business item.
Motion by Ms. Bacon, may I have a second? Second to nineteen, any questions or comments? All in favor, aye. All in favor, aye. Three aye, we remain, most agree.
Okay, plant trees, if you are planning for a lifetime, educate people, Chinese proverb.
Thank you. Okay, may I go ahead and ask those comments? Ms. Nease? Nothing's coming, okay. Mr. Bacon?
I'd like to thank Ms. Trevino for her presentation, and Mr. Johnson for his presentation. A lot of bad news going forward, but I think a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Mr. Wilford, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, I just wanna thank a few of you hearty souls who came, uh, to join us here this evening. Um, I want to thank Ms. Trevino and both Mr. Johnsons for their presentation. Um, I think it's, um, the most important thing is, you know, sometimes, you know, especially from my standpoint, you know, I get a little caught in how, or how don't, um, it's, you know, it's always nice to be reminded of the why, uh, because, you know, this, this is essentially why people spinning up here are here, the folks that we have coming to, you know, labor schools every day. We are all invested in making sure that this community succeeds, and this community is the school district. And, you know, it's providing, you know, the opportunities that every, every child deserves to.
To feel safe, to feel supported, and to receive a quality education.
Because without quality education, you know, that is a question, and it's absolutely important. And, you know, there's a lot of hard work that needs to be done, a lot of funding that, you know, is not there, I, you know, I think the best analogy I can say is that sometimes it feels like we're, you know, building the plane as we're flying it, the plane's on fire. Um, so, you know, it's, I'm glad that's, you know, we have some very dedicated people to try to, you know, navigate it as best as we can. So, um, with that, um, just, you know, I wish everyone a pleasant evening, and, you know, stay safe this week.
Thank you, Mr. Wilford, and Mrs. Trevino, I just wanna thank everyone for coming tonight, and just to piggyback off what Adrian said, um, the school district is the center of the community, and this is all that ours do and have, if we're not providing it here at Lake Ridge, there really isn't any other place for our families or kids to go to get their needs met. So even though these challenges may feel insurmountable at times, we have a lot of really good, dedicated people here, uh, that think outside of the box, and some, how, we always find a way. We do not let these type of challenges, uh, scare us, we face a head-on, and we make sure we do what we have to do as our best. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Trevino, Dr. Shirley.
War in the back was done by Calumet High School students, we're honoring Black History Month, uh, Healthy Hearts, and Valentines. So, uh, if you get an opportunity, go back there and see what Ruby Bridges is doing, who integrated the schools. Uh, the weather on Wednesday, uh, they're talking about snowing all day, seven to eight inches. Let's be aware of that to the parents that are listening. Uh, please listen for your all calls and watch the weather. Um, I've already mentioned we're gonna have a town hall meeting, but it's gonna start at five o'clock, five till six, because we'll go right into our board meeting on February twenty-fourth, uh, to discuss concerns and issues of the community. Uh, one of the topics may be metal detectors, we've been there before, community did not want them. I like to take, uh, temperature of where they are now as it relates to some of the current, uh, issues that we've had. Um, I wanna say Happy Valentine's Day to everybody, and I want you to keep, uh, Mr. Deal uplifted in your prayers. Uh, he is home now, he wants everybody to know that, he's in the recovery mode, and so, um, just keep him in thoughts. I'm sure he would love to get cards from you, so think about sending him a card. For the community, it has taken this time to get back. The pandemic did a job on us, our kids were out of school for a long time, and then we lost a lot of staff members. With that, education had to still happen, and so we did the best that we could do to bring them back. After hearing the reports and seeing all the great activities that's going on, uh, Mr. Johnson and, uh, um, Adrian helping provide funding, and Cindy and everybody coming together to school board, voting to help us, we're almost at a point we can say we're almost normal again. Kids are trying to learn, teachers are teaching, people, but we're relaxing back into the educational mode, and so, uh, we've asked community to help us, to improve wherever we need, we're in this together. I heard Eric say, we are one, that is our motto, let's keep that going. We're embarking on the second half of the year, we still have a lot of activities coming up to end the school year, but we need all hands on deck. Our students' lives are being, what, challenged. And so it's gonna take all of us working together to bring these kids into, um, not just the twenty-first century, but being able to survive and provide and end up going to college and doing what they need to do to take care of their families, and we're responsible for that. So we need everybody, and so with that, I will say thank you, um, the presentations were awesome. I, I mean, you all really dug deep, and, and let me tell you, it's always good to see something positive, 'cause, you know, we hear what we're not doing all the time. People don't see all the things, the great things that we are doing, so I appreciate that. And if you guys get a chance, really listen to those podcasts, matter of fact, you may be one of them one day, so thank you for that, I appreciate everyone being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Shirley.
I just wanna say, um, I think I have a few things to say, I also wanna start with a quote. The future of public education belongs to those who dare to dream and believe there are better days ahead. You know, some prevent the future. I'd also like to say, if you could, um, call your legislators, not necessarily our legislators, but other legislators from different districts to get them to listen to us, because our legislators in our area are listening to us, so we have to reach out to the others ones that are not. And we need to call them, and we need to tell them to say, just say no to House Bill eleven thirty-six, that is the E-Regulation of Public Education Bill that they are trying to pass, where if fifty percent or more of your students attend a charter school, the public school system is dissolved, and it is all turned into a charter school. So we do need to make sure we all call and say no to House Bill eleven thirty-six. We also need to say house, say no to House Bill ten seventy-five, which is the one that Dr. Shirley was talking about earlier with the taxes, because we cannot afford to lose any money, and if this bill passes, we will be in the negative end of school year twenty-six. And nobody knows what happens for us. I'd also like to say thank you to Mrs. Trevino and both Mr. Thompson for your presentations, and also for all the data that you have given us. And I also look forward to the town hall and our next school board meeting. And with that, I really just need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Nease, may I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay.